I'm going to call the meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the time for an invitation for a citizen to schedule a time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. And do we have anyone that wants to put anything on the agenda? The record should show that there are none.
Yes, oh, no, sorry, next thing, sorry. I'm jumping ahead.
Next, we have approval of the agenda.
Now I can talk. Yes, I do have a couple of things. For the executive session, I would also like to add SDCL 125 to 1 for personnel. And then, there was discussion with the Chair yesterday about removing item F from the agenda for under regular business.
And item F will be removed at this time. Any other changes to the agenda? We need to, and Commissioner Jensen's kind of looking, we need to do some work on our job description. And once we have that fixed, then we'll put that back on. So, anything else? Would I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda's approved. Next, we have our consent agenda. On the consent agenda, there's approval of minutes, approval of travel and education requests, approval of personnel action notices, approval of cellular allowances, approval of the human services report. Would we have any additions or subtraction to the consent agenda?
This morning, in front of you, I placed an additional travel, a travel request for Richard Haugen in the County Development Department to travel to Watertown for a Big Sioux Flood Information System meeting on October 23rd.
Okay, we'll add that to the consent agenda. Any other changes to the consent agenda? Do we have a motion?
A move.
Second.
And we'll have a roll call vote on that.
Jensen.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Consent agenda's passed. Moving on to routine business, approval of claims. Would we have a motion?
A move.
Second.
Are there any questions regarding claims? Any discussion? If not, we'll have a roll call vote.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Department head reports. Shall we start with you today?
We have just a couple of items. One is, we received our approval from the state DOT for our five-year plan, which is good news, because that is the first page of any big grant application. And so, that just came yesterday. Also, earlier in the week, we got good news from the DOT. They received a little extra federal funding with their annual August redistribution under the current Highway Act. And so, therefore, they elected to share a portion of this funding, being the good Joes they are at the DOT. And they shared it with the counties and the Class 1 cities in the form of another STIP payout, like we get usually in June. And so, it's kind of nice, we get our redistribution allocation of $5,389.60. So, that's not bad news. So, every little bit helps, and that has to be used for highway and road projects. So, that's all I have, actually, in getting ready for snow, ain't too far away. But...
Anyone have any questions?
Any construction project update? I mean, are we good to go on? Are we waiting for anything? Has weather delayed us for anything?
Just those two small box culverts that we got left, and we're trying to, the last I talked to Holloway Construction, it would be towards the end of November, possibly even early December. But if you're meaning like the bridge projects and whatever, everything's still good to go, and...
I was more wondering about actual construction projects, if there's been delayed because of rain, that kind of stuff, because we've been hearing a lot throughout the state, you hear Sioux Falls, how these construction projects are delayed. I didn't know if we had anything that was delayed.
We are extremely late, and we've also been extremely fortunate, like that bridge deck was supposed to have been done like the third week in June, we just got that done in early October, late September. We also, our chip ceiling, which was getting real critical, that just finished up about two weeks ago, and that should have been done, you know, in June through August. The other projects, the strippers have still not come, and the reason for that is they're trying to get approval to use a different grade paint, because the temperatures are so low. So, that should be done this week. So, yeah, even with the high waters, you know, when we had that large rain, that put us over two weeks behind. That was two weeks of steady work. Other than that, I don't know of any that will be critical anymore, as far as, you know, what projects we got coming.
Commissioner Jensen.
Is there any word from, on the bridge lettings on South 77?
Not from, other than it was supposed to have been in October, I don't know what happened to that, I'll have to check, but that's, it is at bidding now, so we'll wait and see. Also, on the preservation grants, to speak of that, that bid was let, but they won't do the work until next spring. And we had grants for those, that's almost $300,000 right there. So, that's, that's good news that we do now have a contractor, now have a pre-construction meeting in the spring. And so, that is kind of a prolonged process, as you're realizing with all these grants. But, one thing that they changed a little bit with the preservation grants is, that money will be paid upfront by the county, and then we'll turn in for reimbursement, which is a total flip-flop from what they originally wanted. And I think it's because of the timeframe, because when we apply for the grant, you're not necessarily assured of what exact work you'll be doing, until you actually get into the project and see what needs to be done. So, that's why I think it is a better way that, that we put the money upfront, because we're only paying for the work that would need to be done, but we'll wait and see how prompt the DOT is at reimbursing us once we turn in them. But I think it'll all work out, it's a pretty good system. The others will stay as, as they are now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Marty?
Generous of you. Good morning. It's kind of busy. The city is busy with a, with a school threat that they, and I guess you know that already, but that affects, that affects the county, too. So, because I have parents that live in the county, that send their kids to Brookings, and it affects the schools. And so, my staff notified all the superintendents, and I'm putting extra, an officer in each school today at certain times, so, just to, just to let you know. We made it through Hobo, another Hobo day. Terry's office will be busy. No doubt about it. But you know, as far as stats coming to jail, it was, this year, 43 people were brought to jail. And, and out of those 43 people, there's 117 charges, just on those 43. So, a lot of them have multiple charges and so forth. Then the city police do a lot of tickets out in their cars, you know, and release underage consumptions and things like that. But there was 19 DWIs compared to 21 last year, and out of those 19, you know, I don't break it down to say, okay, are these, are these actually SDSU students? I don't have it broke down to that, and we, out of the 19, there was five DUIs in the county, and I don't think they had nothing to do with SDSU. You know, so, just because I give you these stats doesn't mean SDSU, this is all SDSU. Majority of it is, and maybe, maybe next year, I'll break it down more, some sort. But there was 19 DUIs, last year there was 21. This year, there was 30 drug-related charges. Now, again, these are people that came to my facility. There are 30 this year, 53 last year. There was three assaults this year, five assaults reported last year. And so, actually, when you look at these stats, it was a, it was a busy night. It was a busy night for the city police and, and, and my office, but, and the jail would get busy at times, you know, the DWI's kind of all come in at once, we'd have four or five sitting on the bench, and, but I had staff, you know, to handle that and so forth. So, definitely the court and Terry's office is going to be busy processing all this stuff in the next couple of months. Any questions about, and there was a couple of major things that happened, the sexual assault on campus, and, and then the weapon incident, too. So, there were some serious things that happened over the weekend, too, but, you know, no lives were lost and no major injuries, you know, so that's, that's always good, good things to know, or to have and so forth. And as far as our jail stats right now, I have 29 inmates, which, you know, I always say if we can stay under that 30, 24/7 continues to be busy. And, other than that, deer accidents, and, and that's keeping, keeping us busy, and speeding complaints. Bose is doing a major hauling on 77, there must be 10, 15 trucks going back and forth on 77, so we're going to kind of watch that, and, but otherwise, life goes on. Do you have, guys have any questions?
Any questions for Marty?
Yes. How quickly were we notified about the incident at SDSU?
How quickly? I didn't know about it until my daughter received her notice.
Okay.
So, I didn't know anything about it, until, until it went out on, until they notified everybody on cell phones. Normally, I, I'm on that call list, but I, I didn't receive anything.
All right, thank you.
I know the state's attorney's office was notified, right? On the assault, probably.
By the detective, but not through the regular channels.
So, I'm glad she was notified, because it's going to be the major, one of the major players, so, anyway, but. We, when everything cools down, I think us three administrators will probably get together and talk about some things, how we can make sure we're all, all together on communications.
Any other questions?
Got to realize, too, you know, it's just, everybody gets busy, and they're busy handling things in their department, and getting things going, and sometimes they don't get all the info, you know, but, we'll work on that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Vicki?
Good morning. You should have received in your packet the finance officer's report for September, and there's four BEAT noted items, the auditor's account with the treasurer, the payroll and additives total, the highway expenditure report, and the register of deeds statement of fees collected. And in going through that report, we have 22.8% for general fund surplus cash, and that is probably a little bit above what we normally have. We will do the fourth quarter transfers to the highway and emergency management next month, plus we'll be getting taxes in, so we are at a good point for being the end of September. So, that's good news. And going through the revenue and expense report, we're pretty much on task for what we should be at this time. There's a few places that we're over on revenue, and most of it is interest, and then we have also the game fish and park rent that we weren't planning on, so that is in there, too, like under miscellaneous revenue. We're over by $88,000, and that is mainly more interest that we received and the games, fish and parks. And also, we received a refund for workman's comp, and those three are all in there, so that is something that we don't always know what we're going to be getting. The revenue for interest, we did increase that for next year's budget, but for so long, it kept going down and down, and we were getting almost nothing for interest, so it's good to see it's, it's changed. And we will be meeting, Stacy and I, to get together and see what we will be having for contingency transfers. So far, it's looking pretty good, but we will definitely have some contingency transfers, which we always do, so we will be going through that. And for absentees, so far, we've had 1,071, and last governor's race, we had 1,900 total. And they've been averaging about 100 a day down in the absentee office, so they've been keeping busy with all the absentees, so I'm sure that will keep going, it's been pretty steady all along. So, that is what our office has been doing, we're busy collecting taxes as well, and getting stuff ready for the levies that have to be into peer by November 1st, so. Just, any other questions that you have? Thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
Good morning. The first thing I wanted to mention is, if you saw in the claims payable, I ordered two more distro lasers that I actually budgeted for next year. Had a happenstance happen, I'd gone to IAAO conference last year, as I was president of SDS, or SDAO. I must have went to their booth, their vendor booth, and even though I didn't go this year, I was on their email list, and they emailed me from the IAAO conference, said, hey, they had a big special going on, and we're going to honor it until October 31st. So, I got $90 off on it, on two lasers, each laser, so $180 savings from the first one I ordered, so I ordered them. And they came through my own Gmail account, and that was the link, so I had to pay for it with my own funds and get reimbursed, but I possibly have one more to get now, and we're going to be filled up with them, and the guys really like them, and they're working great, so, kind of a unique thing, it just, I got the email, and I was like, holy crap, couldn't believe it, $90 off. We also had a major update with our ProVal, a couple of weeks, well, a week and a half ago, that Monday holiday, actually Jacob was, came in on the day off and did some work, because we needed everybody out of the, out of the software to do that, but I'm pretty excited about it. It's, it's been about a four-year deal, I instituted it with ProVal, that we wanted a documents tab. So, when we're in our program, we can scan and link documents, owner-occupied, property record cards, things like that. So, it's been a long process, they finally came through, we have it. So, we've got the link, and we've tested it to make sure it works, and it all functions. So, for my office, we are one step now toward the possibility of going paperless. Or mostly paperless. It will be a long haul, because there is file drawers and file drawers of scanning that would need to be done, but I need to check with Sean now, and check on our server storage ability, if we need to redo that, or look at something else, so, but, that's a big one for our office, so. Other than that, we are right now full-fledged into building permits, you know, the guys have been going out. I actually started yesterday, finally, on mine in Volga. We'll be going through permits now, pretty much daily, through probably November even, with callbacks and things like that, and try and get everything wrapped up by mid-December, so I can start doing the full analysis, but that's really all I have.
Any questions?
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Bob?
Good morning. We had, October 4th, after the planning, after our meetings up here, we had the, we met, we did the severe weather shelter for the city of Brookings. And I guess one of the big things people's going to have to realize, this building's only going to be what's known as a severe weather shelter, and that's for temporary. I mean, if a storm is coming, we open it, and people can take shelter, but then they have to leave. It's not a, it's not a long-term store, shelter-type thing. On a long-term shelter, we go through the Red Cross, and we, you know, we find like the Swiftell Center, or a church, or something like that. The basement of this building is not designed to be a long-term shelter by any stretch. October 10th, we had a zoning update meeting with Commissioner Pierce, state's attorney Nezvald, and Richard and myself. October 11th, I did a emergency management site visit with the Institute of Lutheran Theology in Brookings. Basically, what an EM site visit is, is when someone works on an emergency plans, whether it's evacuation, or just any type of emergency plans, they typically call me over, either to take a look at the plans in my office, or do a site visit, and just see what they've got for emergency exits, and what's good to act as a storm shelter. I'm not a certified engineer, so I don't tell them what's safe and what's not safe, I just, you know, a basement's better than a, than a three-seasons porch, and things like that, is about all I can give them. October 11th, we had a PPCC pod meeting at the hospital. There is a big exercise, full-scale exercise, coming up on October 30th over at SDSU on that. October 11th, we, also, we went downstairs again, and, and on the shelter downstairs, basically what we're doing right now is going through and trying to get the quotes, and number one, we're trying to designate the actual area that the shelter's going to be, and then the restroom situation. You really don't want to send people back up into the storm to go to the restroom, so we're trying to get a restroom set up downstairs. And there's, the, the hardware's down there, they just have to set it, hook it all up. And yesterday, I did another EM emergency management visit out to AgFirst Co-op in Aurora, Volga, and Brookings. Yesterday, we also received some unanticipated revenue, $116,000 deposit will be made at the end of the month, and you will start seeing heavy construction up near White, the wind towers, they've got their permits, and they're ready to install the towers, so you're going to, you're going to start seeing heavy construction traffic over in that area, they're fully permitted now, and we do still have to do a rezoning, and they got one more building to permit, but the big money comes out of the towers, obviously, when they get permitted, and those are permitted now. Later today, at 1 o'clock, there's a meeting over at the municipal building on the Wellhead Protection Area, we're going to discuss that through a joint jurisdiction sub-subcommittee. Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, my office will be closed, my staff and I are going over to Huron, we got the South Dakota Planters Association Conference, we'll all be over there tomorrow, and then Thursday, I'll be back some of the day, we've got a 911 meeting scheduled, and things like that, and, and anyone that stops by the office while the office is closed, or typically leave a message with the commission assistance department, personnel, and then we take care of it as soon as, as soon as we get back. Everyone's taken care of as fast as we can get them. Friday, there's an SDSU zoning class, they, they asked us, the equine class professor, asked Richard to come over and give them a zoning class, and we've done this in the past also to the HOGs, people that teach the HOGs. October 19 through 26 is the International Association Emergency Managers Conference, I'll be attending that. Next week, October 23rd, there's a Big Sioux Flood Information Systems meeting, Richard's going to Watertown, we had to turn our late request in for that, he's going to go up and keep us informed on that. FEMA's out looking at everything, and, and the Big Sioux River's a big part of the flood maps and everything else, and LiDAR, and new imagery that, you know, we pay for our beacon maps, and those flyovers, where the feds also come in and pay for their own imagery, which is, which is a different angle than what we've got. But they're using that angle now to update our flood maps, to get them actually more realistic than they've ever been in the past. And October 30th, I will have a full-scale exercise over at SDSU, the office will be closed partial time of the day. And on November 15th, I've gotten an email request that they're, they're hosting a special two-day meeting in Pennsylvania on a new, they're going to start regulating a different type of pipeline called gathering lines. You know, we, we know about the transmission lines, which feeds the city of Brookings, and we know about our distribution lines that feeds your house at home, where the gathering lines is an in-between line that the feds are trying to regulate, and, so I'll be putting a travel request in for that. And other than that, today, we got a couple more things on the agenda later. Any questions?
We do have the two BEAT noted items as well.
By all means, I'm sorry, that's why I brought this. I do have my SLA, state and local agreement quarterly activity report for the fourth quarter. I'd like to request that Commissioner Pierce be allowed to sign that.
Any objection?
And the other one would be my time sheets for the, for the three-month period.
Bob, I have a couple of questions. When we talk about the basement being a temporary storm shelter, would you define temporary? What are we talking about, hours, or?
I'd have to say hours.
Okay.
It would not be set up for, I mean, the most I'm going to be able to do, you know, we, we have these, we recommend people have three-day kits at home, you know, to survive for three days. I, I would not be able to stock downstairs for three days worth of supplies, so, once the debris stops falling outside, we need to get them up out of the basement and get them, get them somewhere more, more comfortable for them.
And you said if there was a need for long-term, and I understand that the temporary storm shelter would be kind of a tornado-type situation.
By all means.
Okay. So, when, when there's a need for a long-term shelter, you said the Red Cross takes care of that?
Well, the Red Cross, or nationwide, the Red Cross are shelter managers, that's, that's nationwide, no matter where they're at, whether it's in Sioux Falls, South Dakota, or Bismarck, North Dakota, if we need a shelter, we got a 1-800 number that we call. But what happens, like in, in Brookings, let's say a blizzard comes, we know a blizzard's coming, we know they shut the interstates down in Sioux Falls, we know they shut the interstates down in Watertown, so we've got these buses coming in, let's say we got buses coming in. Our job in my office is to contact the local hotels first. If we can get them in the local hotels, we'll get them in the hotels, because we don't want to take business away from local entities. But if by chance, we got a school bus full of 40 kids that have no place to go, then we would contact with the Red Crosses, in coordination with the Red Cross, we either put them like at the Swiftell Center, or the gymnasium of some church, or whatever we've got. And the Red Cross has got agreements already with most of these shelters in place.
And I guess what I was wondering is, I think this was mentioned in some meeting I was in with you, but whether or not there'd be a potential that, for that type of situation, that the BCOAC might be a possibility.
Oh, by all means, that would be one of them.
And something for us to, to kind of keep in the back of our minds, and if there's anything that we need to be doing, just to be prepared if that happened, and I realize that's a very contingent thing, but...
And that, we've got what's known as a sheltering list, it has to be updated yearly by the SLA, state and local agreement procedure. We're not through there yet, but when we do it this year, then we'll, we'll take the fire chief out, assistant fire chief helps us determine how many people can be in a shelter.
And the thing about the BCOAC, in addition to the restrooms, I think there are showers in those bathrooms, but, so that would be for long-term shelter, a possibility that, that maybe would be helpful.
And I'll bring... And I'll bring the, I'll invite the Red Cross to come up and take a look at it so they can actually, because what they've got is they got a sheltering form that they've got on a lot of our churches. We'll just bring it up and have them fill out a, a form on that.
Anybody else have any questions for Bob?
Bob?
Yes, sir.
The training session out at Basin, when was that again? Basin Electric?
I will have to get back to you on that.
Okay.
Anyone else? Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have a 9 o'clock scheduled agenda item, Storm Ready Award Presentation.
I believe someone is planning to attend from the National Weather Service, right? Bob, maybe we can just continue on with department head reports until that individual arrives.
And then was someone coming from Community Health? Are we just looking at their documents?
They are not able to come today. So, I was going to mention that at the end, but it's just their quarterly report is included in the packet.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about their quarterly report? And then Misty, did you have anything?
Good morning.
Morning.
Well, it's the end of the season for the weed department. We're, we're done after this nice freeze we just had. I just want to let you know township spraying. I sent out bills yesterday. So, the townships will be receiving them, but we're going to be down quite a bit because of our spot spraying and the weather we had to contend with. Now, I just want to update you. Last year in 2017, we township paid us nineteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-two cents. That was for 2017. For the 2018 year, we'll be receiving from the townships eight thousand, six hundred and six dollars and fifty-six cents. Now, that's down because of the spot spraying and the weather that we contended with. So, I just wanted to give you that update. Not sure if you are aware, but the Cabover was sold for fifteen hundred dollars on the online auction. That is now in that individual's hands. And then also, on November 5th, we have a district meeting in Stratford, South Dakota. Again, it's part of our grant that we get from the state. We're required to go to the two meetings. That's the first meeting that I need to attend for that grant. So, on November 5th, I'll be going to Stratford and I'll get my travel request in. And then also, I just want to update you. We have to apply for our grants. So, I'm starting the paperwork for that for the physical year 2020. Otherwise, I don't have anything else. Do you have any questions for me?
I have a question. Anybody else? The spot spraying, we've moved to spot spraying because of the pollinator issue. Is that right?
Yes.
And, and I think it's important if we have anybody listening to the, to the proceedings today to maybe explain that a little bit, that decrease in income. We will reap benefits from the habitat that's provided for the pollinators. That's a good thing. It's not a bad thing.
No, it's not a bad thing. It's not a bad thing at all. Because my goal is to work with the pollinators. Have your natural Forbes in the ditches, you know, along with your noxious weeds. Now, if there's a natural, if there's a Forbes in the ditch and there's a thistle or a patch of thistles right next to it, I'm sorry. That Forbes is going to have a bad day. It's our job to control locally noxious weeds and state noxious weeds. But yes, we, we will work with the pollinators. We are trying to work with the pollinators as best we can.
So, in the spraying, with the spot spraying, because there was so much more of that this year, were you able to see any increase in the Forbes in the ditches then? What was your observation on that?
I saw a little bit. I didn't see much. I'm assuming maybe next year, you know, we'll see a lot more. The other thing we need to take into effect, or consideration, excuse me, is the farmers cut the ditches for hay. So, and they need that too. I mean, it's a, there's a fine line. But as soon as they go through and then all the weeds come back through, well, then you're seeing more Forbes again. So, I'm hoping we're working with you guys, but we've got to control our noxious weeds too.
Anybody else have any questions? Do you ever, I have one last one. Do you ever look at what's going on, for example, in Wisconsin or maybe Minnesota, but Wisconsin for sure, what they're doing with their ditches? Their ditches are beautiful. Their Forbes are elegant almost when you're driving through. And part of that is they don't mow. But I'm, I'm just curious if you ever have any, if you read anything in your publications or your events that you go to where there are comments, things that you can be learning, we can be learning from their experience or?
I've read a few things on it, but I haven't studied up on it, if that's what you're asking.
All right.
I mean, it's something I could look into more and see if there's something we can put into our plan.
That'd be great.
Misty, can you explain, like, you said you had a reduction in the receiving from the townships. Do you bill them per mile? Are you taking into effect the gallons used or how are you?
We bill them, it's ten dollars per employee, which is generally one employee in the truck. Ten dollars for the truck. And then it's eleven cents an ounce for how much, how many ounces we use chemical-wise.
Okay.
So, it's, I've talked to other, other weed departments, counties. They charge a lot more than we do. And I, I don't know that upping our rates would be a good thing. I think we would lose our townships spraying-wise.
Yeah.
And then we'd have a bigger mess on our hands, just so you know that, I think.
I didn't know if you bill them by the mile or?
No.
You do it by the hourly rate?
Just by the hourly rate, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Kristin?
Feel free to cut me off if National Weather Service gets here. So, archery tag started. We've had our second week. We've only had six people who've come in, registered online. But what the really great part is, is our party revenue. So, we charge per two-hour slot. And all of these have been SDSU groups who have come in. And at this point, we have actually recouped a third of the actual cost of the purchase price in two weeks. In fact, that actually hasn't been quite two weeks. So, I think along those lines, the SDSU groups have been fantastic. And we haven't even done like a mass mailing or done list serve with archery tag yet. So, I think once we get it into those hands, this is strictly just the word of mouth and a couple of people I've contacted, mainly the CAs. So, having two weeks basically and a third of the cost of the purchase price, I think is pretty impressive. Well, along those same lines, kind of sticking with SDSU, their marketing class has done two presentations to me. I was part of that process. In fact, I have a public relations class who have asked the BCOAC to participate in their kind of learning process and be part of their classes. And I expect additional classes in the spring since instructors are already calling me. So, this can entail anything from them putting together marketing plans, social media plans, trying to overcome the hurdles we have with social media by mentioning anything with guns, BB guns, even archery kind of puts a stop on anything with social media. So, we do kind of run into those hurdles per se, but some of those can be jumped by just jumping through Facebook hoops to try and get out and target those demographics. One of the other things kind of with SDSU is a reporter for the Collegian is coming out this week to actually bring his team to play archery tag so he can give an honest, fair review of what is going on with archery tag as well as do video for their website, for the Collegian's website and kind of put all that together. So, archery tag has been really popular with SDSU students, which is what we were hoping to have happen. A couple of other things just to follow up. We started doing a monthly newsletter for the BCOAC. There's two versions. One targets people who are not members in some of the activities or some of the monthly costs, kind of what they can expect for a monthly membership, breaking it down that far. And then the other is people who are members, are volunteers, or who have been members in the very recent. We also do, of course, members who, their membership is expiring. So, 717 people were sent this monthly newsletter yesterday. We have retiree archery classes coming up in January and February. We are contacted to do like basic archery for anyone over the age of 65, which is fantastic to get not only, you know, our youth classes that we've been doing, but all the way up through. And so, of course, our equipment is made for that. Couple of new things, our SOP implementation for our gun range is, wait, because I get excited? Yeah, it's fun. Our new SOPs are in place, so we have all of those brochures information. That's actually been a great thing for the gun range. New process, we don't check anyone's weapon when they come into the door, and people are just loving that. We, you know, we have trust in the people who come in the doors. And it also is a safety feature because the muzzles are always pointed downrange. We were closed on the 13th for hobo days. I actually watched the cameras to see if, you know, we would maybe have some contact with people being turned away. We had four people show up to the range who were not members who got turned away. So, for me, the overhead of, you know, six hundred dollars a day, four people showed up. I still think that was a wise decision. National Guard was here on Sunday to qualify. I came in at 6:30 and helped RR SO get everything set up, and then he did fantastic. I met with Train for almost six hours last week. And I also brought in Ekran HVAC system. And we've done a couple of different things. We went over the service contract, which was one of the claims today. And we also installed a few new lines of ductwork into the classroom. One of the bills we kept occurring over and over was the tripping of the sensor on the roof unit for the classroom and also runs the extension office. So, we did install about six hundred dollars worth of new ductwork. And what I've noticed is we have a constant temperature in there now. It's hovering at 70, not 65. And Sonia also has control of her office instead of the mainframe controlling the temperature in her office. So, we went through every single bill, and I can provide that to you guys in a report or privately, however you would like it. Of every bill, we have paid to Train. And the reason behind it, with Ekran being a third-party privately going through that as well, a lot of it was deferred maintenance. So, previous owners of the facility did not perform maintenance, which then caused pieces to fail prematurely. I talked with Northwest Energy as well on a couple of the things that were gas regulators. They were not installed properly or the right pieces. It was done incorrectly when it was installed in the building. So, and that caused us. We are about seventeen thousand to Train with our service contract for the year. And we will have another $5,000 expense with the condenser in one of our archery units that has failed. And that is actually because previous building owners ran that unit with failing sensors and condensers. And so, then it failed. And now we're footing the repairs. However, I've talked to people going forward, and it does look like our maintenance should only be about 3,500 to 5,000 a year. That's normal. That's the art, the gun range unit, that KCC unit. That's, it's because of how much it powers. So, that's kind of where that is. Game Fish and Parks, I had a meeting last week. That was absolutely fantastic. They've invited me back when Dugard sits down and listens to all of the different pieces to that puzzle going forward. And they do have a, a grant of 75,000 a year for our gun range. So, being invited to that invite only was fantastic. So, that's kind of my rather large update. I hope I didn't take up too much of your time. Any questions?
Thank you for taking the time to go to that invitational GFNP. Those are the kinds of things that we need to do to promote. And I appreciate your extra effort. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Anything else?
I, I just have a question. The, all of the stuff with Train and that, is that passing through the governing committee that's out at the BCOAC? And that 17,000, is that within our budget or is there going to need to be a supplement on that? Okay, so, we'll...
We will be over in our maintenance and repair budget. I'm going to guess when it's all said and done, about 15,000 for the year.
And when do we address that? Is that at the end of the year when we look at our contingency money? Is that one more?
That's what Vicki and I'll start looking at now. I mean, as the calendar turns over to November, she and I sit down quite regularly and start going through budgets. And we reach out to department heads and find out what they're anticipating for, you know, additional expenses to, before year end. And we come up with what we will need contingency for and do that resolution.
And then my last question is, when the National Guard were out there qualifying, how, how many people qualified, do you know?
I do not know. Josh and I have another meeting this week because they would like to set their schedule for next year. And we are going to then work, I've got some stuff that needs to get to Terry, so we can establish a contract. And then also maybe a net 30, net 90 for payment. But we're looking at probably a $10,000 contract with them next year, if not a little bit more for them to be able to use the range.
And was this their first time at our facility?
No, this is our, this is their third time since I have been director.
Okay. But before you started, had they been qualifying out at the OAC?
Not that I am aware of.
That's really great.
This was a relationship I established with them.
That's very, very nice.
One more piece to that puzzle of us being over. In our overall budget, I do not think we're going to be over that line item. We will be over. But in our overall budget, because I didn't spend other items and I cut back in other areas, we may not be over that far.
Anyone else?
Thank you very much. Thank you. Sonia?
Good morning. Fresh back from the annual meeting of the National Association of Extension for 4H Agents in Columbus, Ohio. Quite a bit warmer in Columbus than it was here in Brookings last week. But all in all, an excellent conference for 4H and youth development professionals, experienced some good speakers and brought back some information from some presentations that are given by members of the organization from across the country. So, there actually was some 4H professionals in attendance this year from Guam. So, that's kind of fun to see that a 4H doesn't, you know, that it does expand outside of the county of Brookings, the state of South Dakota, you know, the United States. So, it's, it's cool to see that. Next week, Extension, SDSU Extension's holding their annual conference at the Swiftell Center. And 4H is holding a, a short pre-conference that begins Monday afternoon into Tuesday morning. And then our annual conference goes through Thursday. 4H participated in the hobo day parade this last weekend, had a good showing. We had about 50-plus people walking through for 4H and handing out cheese. We have become a favorite. And everybody looks for the cheese and hollers for the cheese and screams for the cheese. And it's fun to give out 3,000-plus pieces of cheese that Bell Brands provides for us. Tomorrow, SDSU Extension, South Dakota 4H is conducting interviews for the 4H Program Director. That, that position was vacated in May, and they are interviewing two. I did have an opportunity to meet one of those candidates this past weekend in Columbus. She comes from Utah. And the other is in Minnesota. So, we'll see what those bring about. We're able to participate in a portion of that tomorrow via the DDN system on campus and throughout the state, in the regional centers. They're asked to give a presentation, likely they were requested to give a presentation on a specific topic. I'm not aware of what that topic is, but it's approximately a 30-minute presentation that each of them are required to give. And then there's a question-answer opportunity following, and then a question-and-answer opportunity just for 4H youth advisors and field specialists for about 30 or 45 minutes following that. So, they do have somewhat of a extensive day for them, both of those happening tomorrow where they're, the schedules are interesting, where they're just bypassing each other, but not necessarily intermixing. So, that takes place tomorrow morning and then again tomorrow afternoon. And then we're preparing in our office for our 4H recognition event on November 13. Any questions for me this morning?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Moving on to... Regular business. Does anybody have an update on what's going on with the award presentation? Then we'll move on to regular business. Item number A. Action to approve Resolution eighteen dash forty-one applied to Block One, True Lock Edition in the northwest quarter of the southwest quarter of Section twenty-five, Township one-twelfth North, Range forty-eight West of the Fifth Prime Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Do we have a motion to approve? Thank you, Commissioner Jensen.
Second.
Bob, do you want to go ahead?
Yes, ma'am. On, this was approved by a vote of nine to zero at our October second Planning and Zoning Meeting. If you notice on the plat, there's a long driveway that is plotted out. Sometimes they tend to put easements into the long driveways, but in this particular plat, they did put a long driveway in, which we appreciate. And, uh, it's submitted to the County Commission with the recommendation to approve it.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item B. Action to approve Resolution eighteen dash forty-two. Resolution authorizing the Director of Equalization to treat certain agricultural land as riparian buffer strip for the purpose of real property taxation.
Move approval?
Second.
Anybody have any comments on the changes?
We just made the changes following the discussion from, at, from our last meeting, so...
Any further discussion? Chris, anything more to say?
Nope. I think it's just a, a good plan. It, it gives us flexibility and the ability to look at everything rather than, sorry you're not on the list again, so, I appreciate it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you for your work on that. Item C. Action to approve Agreement eighteen dash ninety-five, An Application for Occupancy of Right-of-Way of County Highways Made by Lance Minor Operations, Inc.
Move.
Second. Dick, anything to add on that?
Uh, no, it should be pretty, uh, straightforward.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item D. Discussion and Possible Action of Agreement eighteen dash ninety-six. A Mutual Aid Agreement for the Inter-County Sharing of Resources During Emergencies or Disasters Within South Dakota Office of Emergency Management, Region Six.
Move approval?
Second. Bob?
Good morning. Yeah, this is an agreement we've been discussing for a while, and, um, the ten counties listed on this agreement is the ten counties, of course, in our region, OEM Region Six. And, uh, as emergency managers, we always talk when we get together that, yes, we'll, we'll provide assistance, and our counties will back us. Well, some, some county commissions want to see it in writing. They don't, they don't... A lot of our emergency managers, you gotta realize, are only twenty-five percent. And that might be the only twenty-five percent they work for the county. Not all of them even, you know, work full-time, and only twenty-five percent EM. Some of that's their only, only county time is twenty-five percent at, at EM. So, what this would do is, it would allow some of our, or, like my county, with, with your permission, obviously, to go down and, and assist a smaller county or a county that was just overwhelmed with something. A case at, in point probably would have been similar to the floods back in two thousand, was it eleven? Down in, down in Yankton, they may have, may have called us out, but most of, most of the time, they don't. Delmont, they did call this out, but that's a different region. That's not, that's not, that wasn't Region Six.
Anyone have any questions?
Does it, does it bind us to...
It does not bind you. You, you can recall me at any time or my personnel at any time, as long as it's in writing. And there's, the, the cost-wise, basically what they're saying, from what I read in it, there, there's no reimbursement for the initial period. You know, then after that, it's, it would probably be negotiable if you...
But, how, how does the chain of command, and I see command and control and different stuff like that?
It would go under the incident command system, so whoever, whoever the incident commander is, and let's say the Schmidt, if it was Kingsbury County.
Right.
Whoever the incident commander would, would determine if they even need us or not, working with the emergency manager. The incident commander's always gonna work with the emergency manager and...
But, where the disasters happen, that main county will be the main incident commander.
Correct.
You wouldn't show up to Kingsbury County and take control of it, type of thing.
And that's the same thing that would apply. If Brookings County gets hit and we call in the state incident management team, they wouldn't come in and take over. We would still be in control. They would just come in and assist us. And this, you know, the, the state of South Dakota does have an incident management team, which, which covers everything. All this is, is covering basically the emergency manager to go in and do emergency management type things. You could, they could still bring in an incident management team, which would be a lot more people than just, just the emergency manager.
If something happened in another county and they asked for assistance, does that, do you make that determination? It didn't really make that clear in this agreement, or do you reach out to the commission to determine whether we would assist and, and what resources would be committed?
I would never leave Brookings County without the chairperson of the Brookings County Commission allowing it.
And so...
Now, but, but, you know, and I don't think there's any money being, except for my salary and, and my, the vehicle I'm driving is the only cost in the initial, initial phase. And then, after that, we would have to determine with the other county on, on what we could do.
And then, my other question was, let's say part of the request was for assistance, that maybe our highway department would help with, for example, or our sheriff's office, or whatever. Okay. Does our insurance cover us when we go somewhere else and do all of that? Do we have any insurance issues that we would need to be sure we've got tacked down?
We, we would have to ask the, you know, the, the state of South Dakota for, for liability on, on certain things, like can you get sued for helping another county and all that, is covered by state law. As far as the insurance itself, you'd have to check with the insurance experts. I, I do not know.
I, I, I'm in favor of this. I don't want to give the impression otherwise. I just want to make sure that if we had an emergency and we sent people, understand Bob going, or maybe your staff going, that might be part of your regular duties, and we've got coverage.
Well, but when you, if, if I may, Commissioner, when, when you mentioned the highway and the sheriff, that's, uh, that's not this agreement. That's, that's...
So, the only...
That's when the emergency operations center at the state level is operated, and then the, the full commission meets, and that's when you do the declaration, which we'll talk about later, a different document.
Well, but that's, that's for our county. But, so you're saying, under this agreement, the only assistance another county can ask for is assistance from your office?
Initially, that's correct. That, this is the initial one. If there's a tornado at two o'clock in the morning and, and... In Arlington, they, I get a phone call, I call you, I start rolling. We don't have to call the whole county commission together and, and, and vote yes, yes or no.
Did you have a question, Larry?
No. I guess, in the past, we've responded to different counties and...
Right.
We got our equipment rates. I mean, the highway department, uh, Manchester, for example. Uh, we went over, I'm not sure, you know, what says in here, equipment's maintained and, you know...
By all means, and that falls under, that would fall under a diff, the same con, concept, but that falls under the, the bigger, a bigger operation than this. And it has been reviewed by the, the state's attorneys, and... Other than that, I, I don't know what else to say. Uh, the, right now, six of the ten counties have signed it. It's coming our way. The original documents coming our way for a signature. That's why they asked me to bring it to you now. So, when it does, when the actual document gets here, I will present it to you for a signature, and you be allowed to sign it.
And there is this standard hold harmless indemnification, but this is Bob addressed. It's not any other department. It's just, um, emergency management.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item E. Action to approve a request to fill vacancy for a maintenance worker.
Uh, move approval?
Second.
Stacy?
As you know, I hire, recently hired, just a couple of months ago, two maintenance workers, and one, the job just wasn't a fit, and he resigned as of Friday. So, I'm asking to refill, uh, to start advertising to fill that open position. This is a position that's responsible for both, uh, specifically the courthouse and the highway department day-to-day, but then obviously is cross-trained and can help in the other areas as well, but... So, we would appreciate getting, allowing us to get this advertised as soon as possible.
When was his start date? Can I ask that? I just had a question on this. I'm not opposed to what we're doing, but I just...
On, on, what was your question?
Our person that left. Do you know when his start date was?
Um, I'd have to look back. I don't know exactly.
Somewhere, and I can't find the spot right in there. It said the amount of, um, accrued time he had that we would pay out.
Yeah.
And it seemed large for the short period of time that he was there.
And that was an estimate. I mean, the, we don't pay out sick time, and the vacation was like eight or nine hours was all, so...
And, and the document that, I can't find what I looked at when I was reading the packet, had a larger number than that, but just might take a look at that.
Yeah, yeah. We know. I mean, we run that through payroll, and it only gets paid out what is accumulated, so...
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And we're going to move on to our nine-thirty scheduled item. This is the time for the second reading. The public hearing and action to approve Ordinance two thousand eighteen dash zero-five. An ordinance authorizing rezoning of the north five hundred and twenty-eight feet, of the south nine hundred and twenty-one feet, of the west four hundred and forty-fifth point five feet of the southwest one-quarter of Section Two Township one-eleven North, Range forty-eight West of the Fifth Prime Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota, Sherman Township, from an agricultural district to a commercial district. And would we have a motion?
Second.
And I'm going to open the public hearing at this time. Do we have anyone here that wants to speak as relates to this issue? Mr. Hill, could you just tell us what's going on?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Murphy submitted a request on September fifth to the Brookings County Planning and Zoning Commission requesting a rezoning of property up in, with a legal description in Sherman Township from an agricultural district to a commercial industrial district. The Brookings County Planning and Zoning Committee reviewed the documents, ha, held a public hearing on it, and sent it to this board with a unanimous vote of eight to zero to recommend the approval. This rezoning is up off of South Dakota Thirty. Our zoning ordinance does re, does require it to be off of a county township or state road, uh, like a blacktop-type road. This particular incident has a, has a few feet that's not on blacktop. As you can see, if you look at the map, that's on, it's on my page three. I don't know what you guys have. But there's a waterway that runs down through there that they, they could not travel over. So, they had to push this three hundred and sixty-six feet off of South Dakota Highway Thirty. And what they want to do is they want to do a lay-down yard for, uh, yeah, right there, three hundred and sixty feet. They want to do a lay-down, oh, not lay-down, an operations center for the Coyote Ridge Wind Farm. So, they would bring in, they'd put up a, a building structure. They'd have a, a fenced-in area where they could bring in components for wind towers, and they would operate the Coyote Wind Farm from this particular area.
And I mixed up my order here. Because this is an ordinance and this is a second reading, I'm gonna read the ordinance at this time, even though we've already opened the hearing. So, it's Ordinance two thousand eighteen dash oh-five. An ordinance authorizing rezoning of the north five hundred and twenty-eight feet, of the south nine hundred and twenty-one feet, of the west four hundred and forty-fifth point five feet of the southwest quarter of Section Two Township one-eleven North, Range forty-eight West of the Fifth Prime Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota, Sherman Township, from an agricultural district to a commercial industrial district. Whereas Timothy Murphy made an application to the Brookings County Zoning Board to rezone property from agricultural district to common industrial, excuse me, to commercial industrial district. Whereas the Brookings County Zoning Board approved the application to rezone property on September four, two thousand eighteen. Whereas SDCL eleven dash two dash thirty requires the Brookings County Commission to adopt or reject the change, therefore be it ordained by Brookings County, South Dakota, that the following property be rezoned from agricultural district to a commercial industrial district, north five hundred and twenty-eight feet, of the south nine hundred and twenty-one feet, of the west four hundred and forty-fifth point five feet of the southwest quarter of Section Two Township one hundred and eleven North, Range forty-eight West, the Fifth Prime Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota, Sherman Township. So, that would be the second reading. Do we have any further, uh, discussion or questions regarding the motion or the ordinance? Anything else you wanted to say, Mr. Hill?
Well, ma'am, it says that it's off a large parcel, one hundred and fifty-seven acres, and it's taken five acres out of, of crop production.
I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. Anything further from the commission? We'll have a roll call vote. Jenna?
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Returning to regular business. Item G. Discussion and Possible Action on Content for Emergency Resolutions. I think, Stacy, we're gonna discuss before, I'm not sure what the action is that you're asking for.
I didn't know either. I just put it on for if there was some action that needed to happen so that it was posted that way. But what these are, and Bob and I have kind of gone back and looked through old resolutions, and we're, we're tasked with creating a couple of resolutions, just as, as drafts, kind of fill-in-the-blank drafts. So, in the event of an emergency, we would have them, um, kind of at the ready. So, there are two. The first, in front of you on the computer, is a supplemental budget resolution. So, statute says that, um, in the event of an emergency, we don't have to do the legal notification, the ten-day notice, or ten-plus-day notice for a supplemental budget. It can just be put on an agenda, and we can, we can do it in an emergency situation. So, this would just be a, like, just a draft of a res, a supplemental budget resolution that we would pull out and basically fill in the blanks as needed in the event of, um, an emergency where we needed to, uh, expend funds. And then, the second is declaring a local emergency. And we've done this one. I've, we've found several examples of where we have done this in the past. And this, so we did kind of have this template already in place. But there have been, um, this is just an example of one, uh, where we did a, um, exercise over in Volga, and this was the draft resolution for that. Um, and then, here's one, just again, fill in the blanks. But we've done this several times. We did one back in two thousand and eleven for flooding. I think all of them have been due to flooding, if I recall, um, in two thousand and ten. There was one, and basically, it's the same verbiage that we used each time. Um, and then, back in ninety-three as well, we did one.
Yeah, we, we researched, you know, we had a big, well, not a big, a, a category zero tornado hit Sinai and Lake Campbell and snaked all the way over, actually, that opened and caused severe damage, and we actually brought in state assets and, and everything else. But back then, we had a governor that didn't necessarily want declarations. He just showed up and, and he brought the cavalry with him. So, we, we did not have a resolution from that date. But this type of resolution is what they recommend. That we have on file. We could fill it out in our emergency operations center. It, it gets a, and then, we can start, this would allow us to contact, like, the emergency operations center in, in Pierre and, and start the ball rolling, and, um... It lets the outside public know that we, we've got problems and we're looking for help, if nothing else is, is what we're, we're looking at. And this needs to be placed in our local emergency operations plan, which we're reviewing now anyway. And we update once a year, and we just felt it was a good time. We did have an, we had that emergency management full-scale exercise up in Bruce, and inadvertently, a, a document similar to this was handwritten and given to Commissioner Pierce, and, in, instead of the proper format that we had, and... of the proper format that we had, and is what brought on the big discussion from, from my side of the house.
And I think what happened in Bruce, which was a great exercise, is that I'm standing there and I'm looking at what came from the city of Bruce and, and what Bob prepared, and everybody else practices what they're supposed to do. And as chair, I really didn't have a clue how, what we were supposed to be doing, and said that maybe having something in writing so that in the event of an emergency, and if I'm understanding the statute correctly, and Terry, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, 7-21-21 does not require that we have a meeting, right? We can do that supplemental budget resolution. For example, if we want it, but we have to have a dollar amount. The resolution that I was given to look at during our training didn't have a dollar amount. We have to have a dollar amount in our resolution. So whoever is asking for it needs to say, you know, we'd like to have $30,000 for, I think it was water that we were looking at in Bruce, drinking water for the public. You know, we have to put a dollar amount, then I think, but somebody tell me this, because all of you have served this chair before except for Mike, and, but, I think what happens is that Bob contacts the chair, the chair reaches out to the rest of the commissioners and say, they're asking for blank dollars, you authorize me to sign that supplemental budget, and we don't have to have a hearing, we don't have to do notice. Am I correct on that, Terry?
That's correct. And basically what you would need is something in the budget, and I would state up to, in the resolution, up to a certain dollar amount without notice of hearing.
And is that what it says in our form that we got there? I just lost my form, but, so that as chairs rotate in and out of the emergency management liaison position, they would know what it is that they have to sign and what the procedure is. We don't want to be the holdup if there's an emergency, so.
And we want to leave it vague, because obviously Bob's not going to be able to call you at 2:00 in the morning and say, we think it's $32,419.
Yeah. Up to.
Right. But if we say up to a certain dollar amount and budget for that, then we would be okay. If it's a dollar more, we'd have to have a meeting.
Yeah. And that's what the statute.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Which, which actually makes perfectly good sense. I mean, you don't want to, you don't want to tie my hands behind my back so I can't even respond to a local incident.
No.
And if I need to spend, you know, if, if, if we got firemen out there working for 36 hours, we need to be able to get them water supplies and minimal amount of expenditures are going to have to be done.
So that's kind of what we're looking at, is getting our procedures in place in the event of an emergency so that we know what, and we can move efficiently. Any questions about the forms? You guys did a great job on that, by the way. Those are good. I at least understand what we're doing, and when we need to have a hearing and when we don't need to have a hearing, so.
So what I'll do in the future, if it's all right, Commissioner, I'll, I'll put the supplemental budget resolution and the resolution that I have just declaring a local emergency, we'll include them both as blank documents into our local emergency operations plan. And if we don't need, big expenditures at the time, if my budget can carry it, then we will never bring the supplemental budget one up.
Exactly.
And if we do need it, then we'll, we'll use it.
And, and one of the things that occasionally can be a detriment to the commission is that we change our chair every year. Often that's a good thing, because everybody rotates in and out and knows what's going on. But I think if there's some way that Stacy or Bob could have those two forms available when a new person steps into the chair's position to show them and say if there's an emergency, this is what we'll be working with. You, those of us sitting here today, we're going to remember next year. I don't know that we'll remember three years from now, but it would be good that, that this process gets discussed with whoever the new liaison to emergency management from the commission is each year. That would be a good thing.
Well, and it probably wouldn't hurt to even make an informational packet from my department for any new commissioner that comes on board.
Uh huh.
Quite honestly, so.
Okay. So I don't think we need any action, do we?
No, you, you do the action when I bring in the local emergency operations plan and have this documented as part of it.
Okay. Anything further from anybody?
Thank you.
And that information that you've got, will you keep those two statutes with that? Because again, nobody's going to have time in an emergency to do some legal research to look at that, so that'd be good.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Moving on to the commission department director report.
Vicki had already discussed the general fund surplus analysis, and I did just the routine spreadsheets that I do for each time, and it does show, um, hmm, these are not the right ones. I wonder how those got in there? That's interesting. But it does show that we are just slightly above, above average for September. So, you know, it'll vary next, next month, as she said, because we'll do the last, the fourth quarter transfers to highway and emergency management and then, but we'll also have that second half property tax revenue coming in too. So we are in good shape there. Leadership Brookings class is going to be conducting their county day on December 11th. It is a Tuesday, I believe. They're going to be next door here in the community room. And I've already mentioned this to the department heads, but they would like as many department heads and then a commissioner or two probably to be there to speak to that class. It's at 10 o'clock on Tuesday, December 11th. And again, it's going to be next door here in the community room. So if you'd let me know if you're available. If not, I will be there. If, so if they have specific questions, I will definitely be there. And I think the department heads, I made them aware of it too, so we'll get as many there as possible, but. I also set out in front of you, the governor had sent out the email last week on the administrative leave days that he is giving, with the holidays fast approaching here as the year ends. He is giving the day after Thanksgiving, Monday, December 24th, Christmas Eve Day, that's a Monday with Christmas falling on a Tuesday. And then he's also giving December 31st, which is the last day of the year prior to New Year's Day, which is the holiday. So per our current employee manual, the Thanksgiving, the day after Thanksgiving and the Christmas Eve would fall under that employee manual, however, December 31st does not. And that's how we would proceed. Any comments, questions on that?
So we're closed on the 20, November 23rd, December 24th, and not closed on this?
We are not, we would not be closed on December 31st unless that's granted by the commission, because that's not written into the employee manual. To be closed on, we don't have anything about New Year's written into the employee manual, so.
Okay. What are your wishes?
Yeah, the December 31st one, is there, you know, Vicki would probably, is there deadlines for anybody coming in to make payments on the last day of the year for anything in particular?
Well, there is. The last day of the year is...
That's kind of what I thought, you know, that, that's probably appropriate, that we'd be open because of that.
And then, due to lack of vehicles in the sheriff's department right now, I had a request from Sergeant Pike to take the, use the traverse for a deputy that's going out and spending basically the end of November through March 1st, out at the academy out in Pier. And he would take the traverse each, during the week. Now, that being said, if there is something that comes up, we would work something out so the traverse would be here for commissioners to utilize. But I didn't really see anything, I mean, the next 10-county meeting is, we may need it for that, that, if anybody wants to use it for that. And I'm just supposed to work that out with John, with Sergeant Pike, so. Any questions on, so if we know of any upcoming travel, we just need to, I need to visit with Sergeant Pike to make sure that this deputy takes a different vehicle out to Pier for the week.
Is, is that, is that typical? It would seem to me for that long of a period, that because he's there for a week when he's there each time, and there'd be some personal travel going on with that, that it'd be better if he used his vehicle and we paid him mileage for the, the county-related time?
I guess.
What are your guys' thoughts on that?
I guess if it's not being used, I don't have a problem with it.
And for the most part, it's, you know, I kind of looked ahead, there really isn't a whole lot, and like I said, if there is something that comes up, we can adjust that, and then we could pay him mileage for his own vehicle, or they would find something else for him to utilize through the sheriff's department for that week. But he's out there a week at a time and then travels back on the weekends, is my understanding.
If, if I may, I have a question going back to the days off granted by the governor. Does that pertain to the BCOAC? Because the day after Thanksgiving might be a busy day out there with a lot of people having days off. Are we going to, are we going to close that facility, or are we going to keep that open? You've got that one particular day, and then the Christmas Eve might be a, I, I, I'm just asking, does it pertain to closing the BCOAC as county employees also?
It would apply to Kristen as the full-time employee, but I don't believe it would apply to the part-time staff.
Yeah. I just like, we need a clarification on that to make sure that we're...
The, the part-time staff would cover, but the administrative leave day, and if Kristen works it, I mean, it could be for es, what we call essential services, our sheriff's deputy, if the highway has a snowstorm and they're coming in and working, what they do then is get an administrative leave or an eight hours to use at another time. So we could do something with that too. If Kristen is working, she would get eight hours to use at a different time. That's how it's handled with the essential employees that have to come in on those days and work.
One of the, one of the things we're looking at is different hours those days, and most of my staff being SDSU students, they're gone anyway. So probably wouldn't be a full day for me, but I would be the one, because we want to do some Black Friday sales, maybe some different things with, you know, membership options. So definitely we would want to be able to be there, just to try and catch that different traffic. But it, I mean, even if it's not a full day, we can do something along those lines different. But because they are going to be, you know, time where my, my part-time staff are going to be gone, I was already planning on being the person there, just to...
RSOs may be gone too.
Exactly. And, and that could be a thing where we don't have the gun range open, but we do have, you know, the archery range open. And I don't know if there's a possibility, I'm working with Adam, that he could RSO that day, being, you know, a part-time employee, and then I can be front and everything else. So there are still some things, but we were working on schedules yesterday.
Okay. I just want some clarification to help us out here with you, not to throw a wrench into things out there, but...
No, we were, I was already kind of looking at that, and I've already kind of been talking with, with Adam to see if we can maybe do a five to nine that day, hopefully catching people, you know, after they've done all their sales throughout the day, then we can kind of catch some of that evening traffic. And potentially do that on Saturday as well, you know, after people hit the movies in the afternoon, maybe then they can come hit the range.
Yeah, because you've got Saturday, Sunday after Thanksgiving too, that are normally regular hours out there, but you're short on employees, obviously, again, so.
Right.
You know, might be nice to let us know what your plans are for that.
Yeah. And I will let you guys know as, as I kind of look at RSOs.
Well, more importantly, the guys who are assigned to that.
Yeah. Yeah. But already kind of taking a look at that. And then also Christmas, and then also for New Year's, trying to see kind of what we want to do for that, looking at overhead and then looking at hours that people are available. Any questions?
And then the last thing I have is just the dates, upcoming dates. This Thursday is the chambers business expo Brookings out at the Swift Health Center, and I know I'll be working on getting the table set up out there for that event. It's from 5 until 7 on Thursday. Again, department head evaluations are due Friday, just a reminder. I know we've gotten a couple of, I know we've gotten some already submitted, so it's coming up at the end of the week. And then that special session to hold the department head reviews is on the 30th, two weeks from today. You do have a, a regular meeting on November 6th, that's election day. But then on November 8th, it was kind of decided at the beginning of the year that we would do a special commission meeting on that morning at 8:30 to canvas the votes for the general election. So that's Thursday, November 8th, and that's a little bit different. I'm gone the 7th and 8th. I'm out at Pier at a, at the Safety and Loss Conference those days, and so that's why we decided to just have the canvas only on Thursday. What we've done in the past is moved the entire commission meeting to that Thursday, but with, in my absence, we decided to continue to have the meeting and then do the, just the canvas on the 8th. So I wanted to make sure you all have that still on your calendars to do that. 8:30, just a regular, a typical meeting time that Thursday morning.
It doesn't take very long.
No, it shouldn't take, Kristen will have everything that you need and shouldn't take too long. So, couple hours. I'm kidding.
No. Your time, your time on the meeting, on the...
I changed that. Didn't I? 8 o'clock? Oh, I think I changed it on the agenda and not my staff report. It's 8. Yes, 8 o'clock. On the agenda, it is correct. Yes. On the 30th for that, for department head reviews, you are starting at 8, and you'll meet for that first half hour and kind of decide how you want to handle the reviews amongst yourselves, and then they'll start at 8:30. Monday, November 12th, offices closed in honor of the Veterans Day holiday, 4-H recognition night on the 13th. And then we do have the Sioux Valley Commissioners meeting in Kingsbury County. I don't have a location yet, but that will be coming, I'm, I'm sure, here shortly. And again, those always start at noon, and I'll get, as I get an agenda and a, and a location for that, but typically somewhere in Domet. So that's all I have, unless you have something for me.
Any questions for Stacy? Terry, State's Attorney's report.
As Marty discussed, we had a busy weekend. I don't think they've counted up all the underages yet, but sure, it'll be, we have set these on three separate Mondays for magistrate court, so that, yesterday magistrate court went to 1:30 in the afternoon in the morning session, so it's going to be a few fun weeks. I would say that there were a lot more assaults, non-student assaults. We had quite a few domestic aggravated assaults over the weekend too, but there was one grand theme, and that was intoxication. So that's good. We know we're keeping up the hoba day tradition of that, so. We will be starting CIT, which is crisis intervention training for law enforcement officers, nursing staff, and any emergency personnel that are going to attend on November 5th here in the building. So we'll be going over de-escalation techniques. We have five Mondays, November 5th, 19th, and 26th, and then December 3rd and 10th. So at the end of that, instead of sending our law enforcement officers out of town, we will be able to certify them right here. And so save that, plus we're using and utilizing community activities for the mental health issues. Last Wednesday, we met on ordinances. We are getting so close on the supplemental, but we'll hopefully get that done yet this, this fall. So that's all I have to report.
Thank you. At this time, did anybody, first of all, have any questions for Terry? If not, I'd entertain a motion to move into executive session.
Remove. Sir?
We'll move into executive session in accordance with SDCL 1-25-2, subpart 3, consulting with legal counsel, and SDCL 1-25-2, subpart 1, personnel issues. Consulting with Legal Counsel, and SDCL 1-25-2, Subpart 1, Personnel Issues.
All right.
We're going to move, and any opposed, motion passes, and we're going to move on to commission reports. Commissioner Johnson?
I don't have a lot, but on the fourth, I attended the wellness fair up here at the, for the county and the city, and then on the thirteenth, participated in the president's breakfast at Art Center and also the parade.
Commissioner Miller? On October fourth, I attended the health fair as well, an extension board meeting. October sixth, I went to the legislative state's attorney and, or the forum, and I also attended the Raven Precision Egg groundbreaking, and that's kind of an exciting thing that's coming to us. On October 12th, the Board of Directors of the South Dakota Association of County Commissions commissioners had a lengthy conference call, and some of, one, one part of it was that the Sioux Valley District had voted to support saying no on Amendment W, and the other part of it was, it doesn't really affect us right now, but at some point in time, it could affect us. It's where, out where our former president lives, protests, and what we can do to try to de-escalate anything that might happen along those lines. So it was kind of a lengthy conversation about that, and he, our form, Dean Wagner, was asking if, if they come up with some type of legislation, if we as a commission would be interested in supporting that, and so that's what the whole conversation was about. And then I also attended the Hobo Day Parade, and that's it.
Yeah, October 11th, I had the housing task force met there, and then on the 13th, was the president's breakfast.
On the fourth of October, I attended a government affairs committee meeting for the chamber. There was some discussion on the makeup of the committee, and they may make some changes there. On the 13th, Hobo Day Parade and breakfast, and it was a lot of fun, had a great time. Steph and I rode, and the rest of you all did the busy work of walking, and I appreciate that. Yesterday on the 15th, mental health task force met at noon. They've had some survey results, so the survey that went out, I think the website is still up, but it'll probably be concluded rather quickly. Had about 700-plus that started the survey, about 350-plus that actually finished the entire survey, and so I think there's be some trends there and some comments there that will be useful for the task force. They will be looking at having some forums in the near future with the school in particular, and then possibly another public forum that may be a part of empowerment brokings presentation at one point in time to host the task force public hearing, since they have a broad base of people. As I said, the, their participants are already there, and their, their comments are probably known, but hopefully we'd have some other people from the public if it's a forum for the task force that would come and give us some information. And last evening, the central behavioral health met, we changed some, some people on the board. The chairman now is Carla Gatski. Our executive director at this point, Mary Beth Fishback, gave us a, a report on the accreditation process that was completed in the last couple of weeks. They were there for two or three days to do the accreditation. It went well. We got a two-year accreditation forum, which was unusual. Normally, it's one-year accreditation. Mary Beth did ask them if they would return in April for a second follow-up evaluation after they put some other procedures in place, and they, they agreed that they would do that, and come back and, and do a short review of the things that she changed. So I think it's a positive that we're, we're, we're being proactive rather than reactive with the, the processes and procedures over there. So that was good. And that's the end of my report.
On October 2nd, I attended the county funding ceremony, October 3rd, the communities of that school, and I'm trying at the next meeting, September 17th, but I cannot have that written down, and if you're not going to be able to attend the next meeting, just let me know, and so.
Right, right.
And then on October 4th, the health community, they found some very well-done committees, and the government law hearings, and on October 4th, and where the mic was at, and I hope that it's cheaper to be working, and maybe longer, and restructure some of the years,
Whoever wants to be vice chair next year, this would be a great opportunity for you to get, attend a meeting that you would be responsible for next year.
I can go. I can go. I know. Oh?
Yeah, we're over at the law enforcement center, the police station over on Third Street. Third Street, Sixth, Third Avenue. I don't know why. I don't know why it's over there for this meeting, this is the first time, so.